First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Looks like the only item on the consent agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Any discussion or motion?
I move to approve.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Next two cases are public hearings. Case file number 2024-09Z, open a public hearing to consider a request by the Board of Trustees, Ector County Independent School District, for a zone change from FD, Future Development, to Light Industrial, on a 37.83 acre tract located in Section 25, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, property generally located on the north side of East Murphy and approximately 450 feet west of Market Avenue. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. We sent out 10 notices, zero were returned, zero approved, and zero protests. The applicant is LCA and is requesting a zone change from Future Development District to Light Industrial District on a 37.83 acre tract located in Section 25, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railroad Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. The property involved in this request is located on the north side of East Murphy Street, approximately 450 feet west of Market Avenue. The site is currently designated Future Development and is currently vacant and undeveloped. The applicant, LCA, and owner, Board of Trustees, Ector County Independent School District, are seeking to zone change to develop a career technical education school on the site. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments and the following -- zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, this request is not out of line with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near existing Light Industrial District zoning, which allows for the proposed and associated uses. For livability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties. The proposed light commercial -- I'm sorry. The proposed -- second. The proposed use is not out of line with development in the area. For reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and would not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. Based upon the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to conditions A through F, and the conditions are that this development shall conform to the site plan attached heretofore as zoning exhibit, that they shall meet the City of Odessa's zoning ordinance requirements for Light Industrial District, that the signs on the property shall conform to the regulations set in the City of Odessa's zoning ordinance, Section 14-10-1, sign regulations, that lighting shall be shielded to avoid spilling onto adjacent development, that landscaping shall conform to the City of Odessa's landscaping regulations, Article 10-2 landscaping regulations, and that it shall meet all City of Odessa Building Code requirements. And I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Thank you. Seeing that there are questions of staff, I will turn to the public and ask if there's anyone here this afternoon wishing to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this matter. If you would like to do so, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one brave enough to come forward to discuss either in favor of or in opposition, I'll close the public part of the hearing. Turn to the commission and ask if there's any discussion or motion.
Move for approval. Case file 2024-09-Z is presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Motion passes. Case file number 2024-10Z, this is a public hearing to consider a request by Lico Energy and Investments, LLC, for a zone change from Future Development to SPD, Special Dwelling District, and FD, Future Development District, to SPD, SD, Special Dwelling District Surface Drainage, on a 119.57 acre tract of land located in Section 2, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, in the City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas, property generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Dawn Avenue and East 61st Street. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The applicant is requesting a zone change from Future Development District to Special Dwelling District, and Future Development District to Special Development Surface Drainage -- Special Development -- I'm sorry. Special Development District Surface Drainage on a 119.57 acre tract located in Section 2, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railroad Company Survey, City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas. We sent out 16 notices. One was returned, one was approved, and there was one protest. The property involved in this request is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Dawn Avenue and E 61st Street. The site is currently designated Future Development District and is currently vacant and undeveloped. The applicant, LCA, and owner, Lico Incorporated, are seeking a zone change for the creation of residential lots. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, this request is not out of line with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near the Special Dwelling District zoning, which allows for the proposed and associated uses. For livability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties, and the proposed light -- I'm sorry. The proposed residential development is not out of line with the development in the area. Reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities and will not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. Based upon the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to conditions A through E, that this development shall conform to the site plan attached heretofore as Exhibits A, B, and C, and that the signs on the property should conform to the regulations set in the City of Odessa's zoning ordinance, Section 14-10-1, sign regulations, that the landscaping shall conform to the City of Odessa's landscaping regulations, Article 10-2 landscaping regulations, and shall meet all of the Odessa zoning ordinance requirements for Light Industrial District. I'm sorry. And actually, it's not going to be Light Industrial. It's going to be Special Dwelling District, and Special Dwelling -- let's see. Special Dwelling District and Special Dwelling District Surface Drainage. And that shall meet all City of Odessa's Building Code requirements. I would like to request an amendment for condition D, that instead of being the requirements for Light Industrial, that it should be Special Dwelling District and Special Dwelling District Surface Drainage. And I'm here for any questions.
Out of curiosity, you said there was, like, one protest? What was that protest about?
Yes. There was one protest indicating that the effects in flood area are flood -- or flood area are alley. Not enough information. And here I can present this to you.
Okay. This is one of the two public hearing cases today. I would restate that if you're here to speak in favor of or in opposition to this case, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public part of the discussion. Hold off discussion until we take a look at that. I've note that the protest comes from not anyone in that subdivision but west of there in Sunset Heights. Are we aware of any flooding?
I'm not aware.
I know we had a massive rank a few weeks ago, and that's kind of out of the ordinary, but other than that, anything?
No. They are -- this is just for the zoning. Once they do submit their plat, we'll go ahead and take a look at all their drainage, their easement, and how their accesses and roads run.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions? Stand ready for a motion.
I move to approve case file number 2024-10-7 with the change to the Special Dwelling and the Surface Drainage. That changed.
Okay. Have a motion for approval with changes?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Motion. Case passes. Okay. We're now on number four. Case file number 2024-61P, with a review with staff's recommended conditions, a proposed preliminary plat of ECISDCTE first filing, being a 37.83 acre tract of land located in Section 25, Block 42, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey. This property is generally located on the north side of East Murphy, approximately 470 feet west of Market Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Board of Trustees, Ector County Independent School District, with consultant LCA, are seeking to plat to create one lot to develop a career and technical education school on the site. Planning has received no objections for this preliminary plat request, and therefore we recommend approval of the preliminary plat of ECISDCTE first filing, subject to conditions A through F. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff? No questions?
Nobody?
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Motion?
Make a motion. We approve case file 2024-61-P as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Case passes. Number five is case file number 2024-62P. This property is in the ETJ. Motion approving with staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat of ECISDMs first filing, a 42.86 acre tract of land located in Section 34, Block 43, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey. This property is located on the east side of South Trip Avenue, approximately 550 feet west of West Hudson Road. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Board of Trustees, Ector County Independent School District, with consultant LCA, are seeking to plat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This plat has been reviewed by city departments and has received no objections, and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of ECISDMs first filing, subject to conditions A through F. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing no questions, I'll turn to the commission and ask if there's a motion.
I move to approve case file number 2024-62-P in the ETJ.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Case file number 2024-63P, continuing in the ETJ. This involves a motion approving with staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat of Eisenbord Fields, being a subdivision of a 10 acre tract in the northeast part of Section 19, Block 43, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, property being in Ector County, Texas, and generally located on the west side of North Knox Avenue, approximately 1,450 feet south of West 26th Street. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Jose Ferriero, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, are seeking to plat to create three lots for residential development. Staff receive no objections. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Eisenbord Field, subject to condition A and B. We are now open for questions.
Are there any questions of staff on this matter? Okay. Thank you. If there's any discussion, I stand for a motion.
Move for approval. Case file 2024-63-P in the ETJ is presented.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Moving on. Case file number 2024-64P, property in the ETJ. This involves a motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, a proposed preliminary plat of Reader/Writer Switch Edition, Lot 1, Block A, situated in AS Wilson Survey, abstract number 679, and the WB Collins Survey, abstract number 1027, found within the City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas, and generally located on the east side of South FM 3503, approximately 5,000 feet south of East Hammont Drive. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC, with Seth Sampson as the representative, with consultant Dunaway, are seeking to plat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This plat has received no objections from staff, and therefore we recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Writer's Switch Edition, subject to conditions A through H. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Any discussion? Somebody got a motion?
I move to approve case file number 64-P in the ETJ.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Moving on. This is number eight on the agenda. Case file number 2024-65P, staying in the ETJ. This involves a motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, a proposed preliminary plat of Siesta Heights, lots 1 through 11, Block 1; lots 1 through 14, Block 2; lots 1 through 14, Block 3; lots 1 through 7, Block 4; lots 1 through 11, Block 8, of the Siesta Heights Phase 1, being a plat of 67.6969 acres, located in Section 7, Block 41, Township 3 South, and the TNP Railway Company Survey, abstract number 81, and in abstract number 356, Midland County, being part of a culled 200 acre tract described in a deed to LAM Property Management, LLC, as recorded in document number 2023-00020556, official public records, Ector County, Texas, and in document number 2023-29004, official records of Midland County. Properties located generally on the north side of WFM 3503, approximately 2,700 feet east of SFM 3503. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, LAM Property Management, LLC, with consultant DataPoint, are seeking to plat to create 57 lots for residential development. Staff has received no objections, and therefore we do recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Siesta Heights, subject to conditions A through L. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff concerning this matter?
I guess I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It just states that water and sewer are not available, and then in one of the conditions, Midland County recommends requiring a drainage and water availability certificate. Are we concerned if there isn't a good water source for that many residential homes to go up there?
Because this is -- this property is located in a portion of Midland County. We are requiring that Midland -- Midland provide that drainage study and a water availability certificate. Now, these are the conditions for that plat to go forward.
Not necessarily a concern that there isn't a water source, but just because it is part of Midland County.
Yes. They are subject to preparing these or providing these. When they do submit their plat, they have to provide these. The plats will not -- I'm sorry. The MyLars will not be approved unless these items are provided.
So to further her question, they do the drainage study, and it says "and water availability certificate." So part of that study, there would have to be a certification that there is sufficient water to serve those lots.
Correct. Yes.
Otherwise, the P and Z are planned to reject.
Yes. Even if you approve this, because currently it's a preliminary plat, so it's in the preliminary stages, so they do have until the final plat to provide these.
It's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Any other discussion about this matter? Motion?
Make a motion. We approve case file 2024-65-P in the ETJ as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Moving on. We're down to number nine. Case file number 2024-66P. This is a motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, Old Course Estates, fifth filing, being a replat of lots 4 and 5, Block 7, Old Course Estates, a subdivision of the City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas. This property is located north of Turnberry Lane and approximately 160 feet west of Tom Morris Road. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicants and owners, Jessica Cammon Vu and Douglas Conrad Longman III, with consultant Maverick, are seeking to replat to combine two lots into one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request has been routed through respective city departments and has received no objections, and therefore staff recommends approval of the replat of Old Course Estates, fifth filing, subject to conditions A through C. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Somebody give him a hard one. Throw him a curve. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Move for approval. Case file 2024-66-P is presented.
Is there a second? Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Okay. Well, number 10, case file number 2024-67P. Property is in the ETJ. This involves a motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, the replat of lots 6 and 14 through 16, Block 2, El Dorado West subdivision, a subdivision of 0.6 acres, in Section 16, Block 43, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey. Property is generally located on the north side of West Evergreen Circle and approximately 155 feet west of North Cypress Avenue. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Stan Stroops, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, are seeking to replat to combine four lots into three lots for ownership purposes. This replat request has received no objections, and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of the replat of lots 6 and 14 through 16, Block 2, El Dorado West subdivision, subject to conditions A and B. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
There was a note on this particular matter that the lots do not meet minimum size requirements, however, they were replating for four lots, three. Is there any significance to that note?
Okay. So currently, there are four lots. They're combining them to three. We haven't received objection from county. Let's see. Give me a second. We haven't received objection from county indicating that these lots are not appropriate. The request, let's see. The request has been routed to SW Howell to provide any documentation to substantiate the smaller lots. And they did obtain a variance through the county for the lots that do not meet the one acre requirement.
Are water and sewer available?
Water and sewer? I think it's more of septic.
We said sewer's not -- it says water's available, but sewer's not. And I was saying that lot sizes had to be at least half an acre.
Yes. So the lots, let's see. Some of these lots, as I was notified, were already existing or had --
A grandfather?
I think they had existing properties. Give me a second. Some had already had existing buildings on them, and they were allowed to remain that way. So what was happening is the family was dividing these lots in order for each house that's on there to be able to have their own property. I'm not sure if there was any conditions. We didn't receive any protests from Ector County in this matter. The only thing that we were told is that they were allowed -- there was a variance submitted to the county that allowed them to be this small.
So by reducing from four to three, you feel like it's even a better situation? But it's not ideal, but?
It's not ideal, but the county allowed it.
But it is one owner.
It is actually one family that's going to have several owners on.
And I see this from time to time. I never knew what the answer was. I didn't know you could actually deliver.
Yeah. So what happens when the lots become smaller is that they have to go through the county to get that variance approval. Because normally, these lots, as you all know, have to be an acre. If they submit a request through the county and the county approves that variance to minimize the lots to be less than an acre, then that--
So we're happy if the county's happy. Is that what you meant?
Yeah. It's mostly their requirement, since it's in the ETJ.
Are they on different septic systems? Are they?
I think they're going to be -- I think they're going to be on different septic systems. I don't think that the county would allow them to be all in one, to be honest with you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion about this? Kind of out of the ordinary, but I know it happens when you've got families that--
Well, these lots are actually getting bigger, right?
Yes.
Not smaller.
So it seemed like a better deal than it was before.
I move to approve case file number 2024-67-P in the ETJ.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Case file number 2024-68P. This is in the ETJ. This involves a motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, replat of lots 3, 4, and 5, Block 9, ranch acres, a subdivision of 1.95 acres out of Section 21, Block 43, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. It's generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of West 25th Street and North Trip Avenue. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicants and owners, Bernardo Aldonado and Hector Rodriguez, with consultant SW Howell, are seeking to replat to combine three lots into two lots for residential development. This replat request has received no objections from internal staff, and therefore planning staff recommends approval of replat of lots 3, 4, and 5, Block 9, ranch acres, subject to conditions A and B. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Okay. If there are no questions, I'll ask if there's any discussion. If no discussion, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve 2024-68-P in the ETJ.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. Going on to case file number 2024-69P. Property in the ETJ. This involves a motion with staff's recommended conditions, Wakase Edition, third filing, being a replat of Lot 1, Block 6, Lot 1, Block 7, and all of Block 9 of Wakase Edition, second filing, located in the north half of Section 34, Block 43, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey. Property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of the proposed Third Street and the proposed North Mallard Avenue. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, LAM Property Management, LLC, attorney Mr. Bruce Casey, with consultant LCA, are seeking to replat to modify the lot lines of two lots, Lot 1, Block 6, and Lot 1, Block 7, and to replat the existing eight lots of Block 9 into nine lots. This replat request has received no objections, and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of the replat of Wakase Edition, third filing, subject to conditions A through D. We are now open for questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff? If there are no questions, then I'll ask if there's any discussion from the commission or a motion.
Yes, I'm questioning the water source. When would they know if there is an acceptable--
This probably going to be Ector County Utility District.
So the -- since this is going to be Ector County Utility District, when they submit the Mylar, there'll be a signature block where they would sign, indicating that there would be water source, and it would be provided to them.
That would be okay.
That notation will be on the Mylar.
I'm sorry?
The notation will be on the Mylar, so when the Mylar's filed in the county clerk's office, public will be on notice that you can only get water through the utility.
Yes. And actually, on the Mylar--
You can't drill wells.
Yeah. On the Mylar, it would have that signature block, how we have the chairman and the development department, indicating that they're going to be the water source. Their appointed designator who signs the approval is the one that's going to have their signature on.
Don't hide it. Don't hide it.
Thank you.
Make it well known. Okay. I think we're done with the last item.
Can we get an approval on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Have a motion?
I move to approve case file number 2024-69-P in the ETJ.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same saying. You can be chairman next week. Case file number 2024-70P.[1793.46] Case file number 2024-70P, motion approving with staff's recommended conditions, replat of a 3.40 acre tract of land out of lots 2315, Block 1, 1936 subdivision, being the west part of Section 24, Block 43, T2S, TNP Railroad Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. This is generally located on the east side of North FM 1936 and approximately 310 feet southwest 26th Street. Yes, sir?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owner, Claymar Incorporated, LLC, with consultant SW Howell Incorporated, are seeking to replat to combine six lots into three lots for ownership purposes. This replat request has received no objections, and therefore staff recommends approval of the replat of 3.4 acres out of lots 20 through 15, Block 1, 1936 subdivision, subject to conditions A through D. We are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, I'll ask if there's any discussion. If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
Make a motion. Will you approve case file 24-70-P in the ETJ is presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll need the motion to adjourn. We've got anything else?
No further business.
That was a motion to adjourn. Anybody want to go home? Say aye.
Aye.